Ready? We'll start out with a word of prayer by your heads. Most gracious heavenly father, Lord, we do thank you so much for everything you have done for us, for watching out for us and guiding us. We thank you for this moisture you've given us. And Lord, we just pray that you will be with us and guide us and direct us in the business of the county. That you will help us work together to deliver what we need to deliver and get things done. In these things, we ask in your most gracious name, amen. Have a roll call?
Mr. Coats. Commissioner Laird. Commissioner Milne. Commissioner Nickleason. Chairman North.
Here. We all stand for the pledge of allegiance. This time, we're going to be discussing land swap and I'm not sure if we want to go into exec session to do this, or if we want to do this out here in the general public. So what is the?
Mr. Chairman. County still has some business to do on this to hold up our part as it's not done yet. It could influence certain aspects so of it. And with that in consideration, since we can't seem to get it done, and we don't have an actual time to get it in place, a deadline or anything like that, I would suggest that at this point, we do this in exact or a consideration of contracts and real estate.
Okay. Do you have a second on that or any other opinions?
That was a motion, I guess.
Yes. I will take that as a motion then at that point in time to go into exec. Do we have a second on that emotion?
Guess not, so keep moving.
Anybody?
I'll withdraw it then.
Yeah, I'm not going to second the motion. I would, I'm not sure I followed exactly what my fellow commissioner was alluding to or referring to a few minutes ago, so I may be forgetting something or unaware of something.
If you want.
But I, I think that from a general perspective, our conversations with the city for the land swap discussions have been public. I think that our constituents across the county might have some interest in knowing about what's going on and what the status is, especially as follow up to our previous conversations. So my feeling is that, subject to council's recommendation, that we have the presentation, and if there are specific items we need to go into executive session for, then I think make a motion at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
Just to further explain a little bit is for the county side, county property that's in question, we have not been able to get any appraisals completed at this point in time. And as we haven't been able to yet, if we have it in open, then I'd suggest or request that these appraisals be done in an expedited manner so that there is no potential for increases in values or any, anything in that area, basically. So I'm good with it being open, that's fine. I'm just saying that we need to not, if we're going to do it in open, then we can't drag our feet like we've been on getting appraisals.
Yeah, as long as we've been doing, looking at this, I'm wondering why we haven't in the past gotten these appraisals. And I do agree that we need to get that done.
So I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. Well, Carter, if you wouldn't mind, both of you coming up and we'll let you give your presentation on this. I know, I'd love for you, thank you, appreciate that. I'll let you get started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good to be with you today. Thanks for having us. Our intention in visiting with you today really is just to review some of the details of the proposed swap between the city and the county and identify the pieces of land that would be subject to this agreement with you and entertain any questions if it so pleases the commission. To give a real broad stroke with regard to the proposal at hand, the idea is that for city property that is located on the mountain that the city and the county have co-occupied for a number of years now, that that would be land that we would swap for county property that's here in the valley, essentially. And we've tried to be fairly thorough in creating a list that makes sense for us to propose for your consideration, that would be descriptive of those parcels here in the valley. And with that, if I could turn the time over to Ms. Becker to walk us through those, I would certainly appreciate, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Don't you love it when he does that? Don't you love it when he does that?
Yes, I'm used to it. We have projected today up on the screen, and I know you all have received this, the parcels that are of most interest to the city of Casper. We have gone out and physically looked and photographed these parcels. It's about 20 acres, and in comparison, we're looking at about, in comparison, about 400 acres of interest that we would be interested in trading for the mountain. And it doesn't seem like that's, you know, 40 or 20 acres versus 400. But the acreage in the, as Carter has said, the valley is interest to us because some of the parcels are potential for some residential development. Some of them are along the river that we would like to utilize for trail development as well as our river restoration project. And some are just right of way access where we, there's some strips that are right along one of our roads that we want to be able to maintain for just utility access. So our interest in the parcels that are highlighted up there, I think we've gone through a lot of them with you all individually, but each one has kind of got a little purpose. We did add as recently the last parcel, which is Sage Park. We, as of last Friday, working on, with our Parks Department, on the restoration of Sage Park off of 15th Street, we had had arson with the actual structure with the, which was recently torn down then, which was the, what am I going to say, the canopy? Wait, not the playground, it was the other park. Okay. So we're looking at totally redesigning Sage Park, moving the parking lot to the west of that so that when Manor Heights School uses it for track day, the parents can get off of 15th Street and actually have more of a dedicated parking lot. And in the process of working on that, recognized that there is a triangular parcel right smack in the middle of Sage Park that is owned by the county. And so that rendering was put together quickly for you all to see where that is. And it's point one, point one two portion of an acre. So that one was added to the list of the properties that are projected up there in the green. And then we also had included the Health Department's properties on there for purposes of some city projects. And again, we recognize that the valuation of that is of critical importance to get those appraisals done on that property, both with the building as well as without the building. And I think that kind of brings us current.
Commissioner Laird.
Have you all done appraisals on all your stuff?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Commissioner, we have.
And you started that about 18 months ago, we have been dragging our feet in all that. What came up then though was later, correct me if I'm wrong, that you, the properties that the Health Department are in, you decided you wanted those as well. And so have you had those appraised at all or taken a look at the values of those?
Mr. Chairman, we have not. We did complete the phase one and phase two, which I believe you all have, with an EPA grant that we were successful with, with the city. But that's been really our only investment into that property.
Do you have something to say, Carter?
Sorry.
Ms. Becker.
So you, what's your feelings about the comparative values between the property you own and the property we own would be part of trade?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I suspect that there will be a, an imbalance, if you will. I don't know that that would necessarily be dispositive, as it were, with regard to what it is that the county intends to use all of that property for. Furthermore, I would remind the commission that a portion of that property would stay with the city, and that is the property that essentially is the home, if you will, for the cell tower farm that's, that's up there currently. And so with regard to it being a long-term recreational use for public access and so forth, that's been the route of advocacy that I've been able to maintain with, with my, with the city council.
Carter, on that particular piece where the towers are, we want to make sure that whatever we do, that we maintain easement that we, like we currently have, so we can get to our trails and stuff like that, just so we're not isolated out there and I'll be able to get to everything that, that we have planned with mountains, so.
I would agree.
I know that is one thing that has been brought up. We got any other questions from anybody right now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nickleason.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Napier and Ms. Becker. Couple of questions. The, it's been a while since our last conversation on this. I'm thinking I heard you say, or I inferred that the other properties listed on this display were part of our previous discussions. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, I would agree.
Okay. And, and my recollection is it was a longer list, so I think some have dropped off the list for one reason or another.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, you are correct as well, yes.
And unfortunately, I haven't had the time, and I don't know if we as a county or our staff has had the time to try to see which ones are now off the list.
Sure.
I don't know how critical that is, but some of them we might want to get rid of, I, I don't know. So there could be some more discussion at some point. I, I don't, I know I'm not prepared for that today on those other parcels that have dropped off. The, the portion of Sage Park, that to me looks like a no-brainer, just speaking for myself. I think it could very much benefit and enhance Sage Park and your, the city's activities and the public's activities there. The Health Department thing, you know, that is a substantial and material addition to the conversation. We had envisioned for a long time, since I've been on the commission, yes, since, since I've been on the commission, that maybe the library would be built there.
Right.
We're all aware that that hasn't progressed. I've recently had a conversation with a member of the foundation, the Library Foundation, and I'm advised that they have a meeting coming up with the library and that there could be a possibility that that might be back on. I don't know. But we, and I still am comfortable with a swap if it works for the Foundation Library land for this Health Department Sage Source Gas parcel. So part of me thinks that we ought to hear back from them. I think we kind of did hear back from them a few months ago, but the indications are they're still having some conversations. So I did, I don't know to the extent you were aware of that or even the rest of the commission was aware that there are imminent conversations, but I, I wanted to make that at least known. Maybe you're aware of some of that, some of those discussions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond real quickly. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, that's a very good point. The, the position that we have taken, and when I say we, I mean with council's blessing, the position of the city, is that if substantive progress can be made with regard to that iteration of a swap with the Foundation and ultimately the Library Board as partners in that, we would agree that that is a very appropriate use for that land as well. If however, on the other hand, progress along those lines continues to stall, we would ask that it be included in this discussion with all of you as a part of a swap that potentially the city and the county could do, independent of what the library and the Foundation may do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, one more question. I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. Ms. Becker, either of you, do you know approximately how many acres of the 400 or whatever up on the mountain are currently part of the Nordic Trail system? You know, they, they actually have something that's called the North Forty, so I assume that's about 40 acres. And, and I know we're not talking about the Biathlon because that's owned separately. So, you know, in my mind, I know those trails pretty well, but I don't know in terms of acreage or even if some of the acreage is in other distinct segregated locations up there on the mountain.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I would like to show you this map and just see if you might be able to answer your own question.
Great.
Does that work?
We would appreciate that because I haven't seen that either, so.
I apologize.
On here, what, what portion are you talking about? I mean, I know where the towers are, but where, what portion are you talking about retaining? I understand the towers, but I mean, on this map, because we've got two different size of groups.
Correct.
You've got the 432.
Mr. Chairman. We were looking at dividing the 432 for estimate, estimates down the middle so that we would have the right-hand section where the tower is, with the understanding that you all in the agreement would retain access that you needed for any of those trails that would cut through. The Nordic Trails, most of the trails are on the left-hand side of that 432, and that's the portion that we were going to incorporate into the trade.
Okay, so basically the stuff on the top of the mountain, the east end of that 432.
Yes.
Okay.
And I say right-hand side, but yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're,
Yes.
that we have something that shows exactly what we're talking about and what we're not.
But we're aware that you would still need access across that property, but we would like to secure those cell towers, be able to get some form of fencing and so forth up there and get them secured.
Okay. Go ahead, Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to further elaborate, we are working on a plat right now that would make a map like that much more illustrative of the piece that would remain with the city once that is complete. And so certainly once that, that plat is finished, we'll resubmit and exhibit to you so you can see essentially the center portion that would be carved out with regard to the continued home for the cell tower farm there.
Okay, well, you know how it is, when you're looking at something that's not kind of lined out, you don't know exactly where that is, and I'm just, that's all I was asking is that we'd have something that shows where that location is specifically. So.
And the Commissioner Nickleason, I was hopeful that at least you all would see that the trails are on that west side.
Yeah.
That would be part of that swap. Yeah.
And that, that also includes their, our current maintenance. Okay. Okay. Commissioner Nickleason. Go ahead, go ahead.
Around the time we commenced construction of the Nordic Trail Center Lodge, we thought that, that we were going to enter into a lease or temporary use arrangement. That never got done. My feeling is that even though we have hoped that this would have been done years ago, it hasn't. There's certainly a hope that it doesn't take years to finish this, but I don't know what that gap is between now and when we're to the finish line. So my question is, can we enter into a use agreement or a lease agreement with the city for, on whatever kind of friendly terms are mutually agreeable?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner. That would certainly be what I would advocate for. And my hope would be that it would be designed around a shorter timeframe to kind of give us both sort of a mutual deadline by which we could complete the majority of this arrangement and hopefully be on our way after that, that limited use MOU, if you will, for lack of a better way to describe it, would, would expire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Milne.
Looking at the map, everything, I was thinking about it a little bit last night about the trails cutting across the different roads and systems and whatnot up there. Would it not maybe instead of taking a big swath across from end to end, would it not maybe be easier for you to cut a 10, 20, 30, 40 acre square out of that area and then just put in the one easement from, from like East End Road or Tower Hill over to your, to that swath, to that, to that section that you're cutting out rather than just the whole swath and then trying to get easements across it? Just a thought. One easement instead of however many, one. You're going to be cutting the property off anyways, so I was just trying to think of that. I don't know, it's just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, conceptually, that sounds appropriate. It would help to kind of have it laid out, you know, so we could know exactly what that, what that looks like and so forth. And so maybe we could work together and figure something like that out.
Mark it up.
I think that would be, I think that would be a really good idea is figure out just exactly what you really want up there to incorporate those towers. Because the rest of it, we're using it for parks.
Well, and with room for expansion or whatever.
Yeah, sure.
So I appreciate that.
But if you all know what you need too, then we could incorporate that into the plat too, if you needed to mark it up a little bit.
No, I thi, I think that would be, personally, I think that would be a wise decision is just to kind of figure out what you really need out there. Look at our potential expansion with the slash pile versus the trails and stuff like that and make sure that we, that we're incorporating what we currently have, that we're utilizing. And then also make sure that we have an easement, because I know there's some private property that come through that portion up there, and we want to make sure that they have that easement as well to get across there, to get to their property. We don't want to, we don't want to do anything that's going to block off that private property back there.
Again, Mr. Chair, I would like you all to help mark that up because I don't per se, and I don't know if Carter knows where this slash pile is. So even having some indication of that.
It's just on the east side of where the, the towers are.
Yeah.
So, and that's where a lot of people up there take their, their stuff and they burn it on a annual basis, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
Actually, what, instead of us making this decision with this, I would suggest that they work with Colin Michael, Parks Director, and he can really, I mean, he's very familiar with it and would be able to assist probably better than we could.
Make that direction.
I'll be happy to sit down, get, get with you and, and get, get a meeting set up with Michael so we can sit down and kind of look at this stuff.
Along with our surveyor, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, and that way we can kind of figure out, you know, what, what's really in there and what we really need to make sure we have. So, yes, that'll work. Let's see.
I have a suggestion.
Commissioner Laird.
Have you guys thought of doing a, a working agreement? Putting it all in writing, setting all these things out. It's just a working agreement, we can look at it, figure out whether it even needs to be tweaked. And then I think today, we ought to make a motion to get our property appraised as soon as possible as well, Mr. Chairman. But I'd sure like to have an agreement sitting in front of me because I keep hearing different things, and I've looked at that map and I've gone up there and looked at it, but it's still confusing, I know for most. But I'd sure like to have an agreement sitting in front of me because I keep hearing different things and I've looked at that map and I've gone up there and looked at it, but it's still confusing, I know for most. Just want to know where all these properties are, I don't like the idea that we build a, a big two million dollar building on your property either. I'd like to get that straightened out. So if you can do that, imagine, that'd be really nice.
And we'd like to build a parking lot, so.
Yeah.
I think that would be good for us to have an MOU, at least a short term while we can get everything, the I's dotted and the T's crossed on this. Um, and I'm not sure if we need to make a motion or not to.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
So, my suggestion would be if you guys took the lead for the MOU to get that completed. And then that'll open up our side where we can get that appraisal done as soon as possible.
We can work on that.
That way it's.
Yeah, we can get that expedited and get moving forward on that and get that taken care of, so.
Chairman, I was gonna ask Commissioner Nicolason if, if you wanted us to step through the parcels that we turned down. Because I know that there were more, but there was distinct reason we said no, some of them were about the size of this area. That were just on the corner of Robertson Road that, who knows how we, how you all ended up with it. But little pieces that were up next to private homes or right on the Paradise Valley Golf Course that we said no to. I mean, we know exactly, because we did track them all down by their GEO code and decided no. Some of them were just over by the old Farnham Furniture, right off on the side road. I mean, it was just, it was apparent. And then one of them on the list was the former Iris Clubhouse, which had been left on there by accident. I think after the county had gifted it. And so that was one, we just automatically knew it was not gonna happen, but.
And I know some of the others were up by the detention center, there was a whole thirty-seven there were right there.
Ran through, but I just wanted to make sure, because I know your time, you haven't had the time to cruise out there and look at all that. But we did take pictures and identified that, I mean, they're not, they're not mode, I don't need to be there, just it, these weird intersections that are out nowhere. We do have the photos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, they weren't gonna do the city any good and they're probably not doing the county much good.
I don't think you have to maintain them, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, right, thank you.
I just, I just, if you had some doubt about them, we do have photographs of, of them and an explanation as to why we ultimately said.
Yeah, and I know our staff went out and took photos and did their initial review. Um, let me not waste our time today and if I have a couple of specific questions, maybe I'll just get with you offline on this parcel or that parcel, if that sounds okay.
Right, and we involved our city planner Craig Collins as well as our paralegal Heather, so we were all cruising and taking photos also, but.
Great, great.
Then brought the recommendation forward to Carter and Council. But yes, we'd be happy to.
Thank you, ma'am.
Not just me.
It'll probably be nice, we, before we can get together with Michael, um, just because he's got the bug that's going around right now. I don't want to be, I don't want him to share with me or you, so, um, prefer not to get that. So, um, but as soon as he's feeling better, I'll reach out to you and we'll, we'll get a meeting set up that we can look at all this stuff and figure out just exactly what we need to move, do to move forward, so, okay. Got any other questions?
I, why shouldn't we get in, get an appraisal on those properties down in Sandbar immediately? We're gonna create.
And we, we are agreeing to that, we're not disagreeing with getting the, getting the uh.
I mean, getting it started right, you know, this week per se.
That's what we're gonna do, but we're gonna work on the MOU. So that we're covered, so we're covered.
Can't we do both at the same time?
Alright. Yep. Yep, and once we get the appraisal set then we're, we'll be ready to move forward, so, does everybody in agreement with that?
Meet with your Parks Department, so.
Yes, yes.
We'll be doing two things.
So, yeah, and, oh, alright, any other questions for the city? Appreciate y'all coming in today and I look forward to getting this off the table. It's been on the table for a long time, we've been talking about, about this for a whole lot of time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
Madam Attorney, when do you think we'll be able to start scheduling or reaching out to different uh, appraisers to get this done?
Mr. Chairman, um, Commissioner Mill, I guess, are you wanting appraisals on all the parcels that are on this list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, well, yeah, we'll need to have all of those.
Place busy, reach out to the next one and to the next one.
Yes, we, we can start getting in touch probably today, send that message up to, to my staff and start working on it.
Sorry, and Madam Attorney, most of these have pretty easy access down here. It's not, it's not like some of the other places that we've been, that we're looking at. So I've been to all these and I've looked at all of them, so I'm pretty familiar with what we have. Um, but as far as getting an appraisal, because we need to, need to get that taken care of sooner than later, please. So, alright, any other questions? Quiet up here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
See you, nice to see you, Liz.
Danielle.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I am here to present on behalf of Michael Brown in the Parks Department. Um, he has requested um, a structure change with his department, with his supervisors. We had a long-term supervisor retire and he was the supervisor over both the mountain and the lakes. Um, Mr. Brown is requesting that we split that supervisor position into two positions, one for the lakes and the other one for the mountain. He does have um, internal interest for the lake supervisor position. Um, if he fills with that position, he will not replace um, that person's current position. He will just take on the additional duties and will move to step one with the salary structure. At this time, he does not plan to promote um, anybody to a supervisor on the mountain. He is going to oversee the operations himself, short-term, until he decides what he wants to do with the mountain supervisor position.
Danielle, if I understand this right, at one time, not too long ago, we actually had two supervisors. So this is not anything that's really, that we're doing new, it's just going back to where we were, so we had everything covered.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, he does have the money in his budget for this, the supervisor that retired was here long-term and was on the max step. So he's got the money in the budget to split the two.
Got any questions, got any of that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was fast. Alright. Alright, well. Madam Attorney, did you have a chance to get the um, the rules that you were working on completed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do, I do have a um, a draft I could email to you, I don't happen to have a hard copy. Um, but I could, or I could have them printed and um, brought down so you guys could take a look at them.
I was hoping we'd have those before this, and that's the reason why we put that on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but at this point in time, it's a little, little rush for us to to run through them all and trying to, trying to see.
I can certainly email them, start taking a look at them perhaps for the next meeting if it has.
No, that would, that would be fine. Um, I would just like to see, have everybody have a chance to look at them and see what we, what we do like, what we don't like. And which portions that we need to modify to fit our county instead of the others, so. Any other questions about any of that? Alright. Um. Our next. Who are you? Oh, okay, are you, okay, you wanna, um, are you ready to talk about the deannexation? Okay, well, come on, come on up then and we'll jump ahead and get this taken care of.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Mill, I mean Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, the agenda indicates Tom Brower, City of Casper, might also be attending. And since we're uh, well ahead of schedule, I didn't know if, if, if we need to wait for Mr. Brower, or maybe that's unnecessary, I don't know. I was just pointing it out.
Yeah, we can actually let him stir it out and then if, and, oh, go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I did hear from the city attorney's office, I guess Mr. Brower will, will not be making it today, so just, just Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, thank you for the heads up on that, so we don't need to wait. Okay, alright, um, I think this is a pretty simple presentation from what I understand.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, it is.
Okay.
Just for the commissioners that aren't familiar with this particular parcel. There we go, so you have the layout of uh, the City of Casper and, sorry, I happen to be a laser reporter on this, and then if you're able to, it's not, um, we'll jump to it, but anyways, here's the City of Casper and you can barely make out the uh, parcel on the map. But it's a weird hanging nail, it's kind of hanging off of Wolf Creek and that's a property uh, that we'll be discussing.
Okay, so that, just for clarification, that's just that small chunk that's this, that's going south from Wolf, Wolf Creek in that little trapezoidal area.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry? Oh, I thought you just pushed the button, sorry, I'm not familiar with the remote. There, it's on now. There we go, there's a setup, yep, we're good now. Perfect, so we'll just go over the history of the property, the current subdivision, the planned development and um, Moose Road. So here's that um, property, it's approximately thirty-three acres. The city purchased the property in nineteen eighty-one and um, because of that purchase, it automatically goes into um, city inventory. And it's now part of Casper. In two thousand seventeen, they sold it to a private property, or private party at that point. And then me and a friend of mine had purchased it in two thousand eighteen in hopes of uh, developing it and hopefully building a house that, you know, we would ultimately die in at some point, that was the dream, right? So um, that obviously didn't happen, um, he passed away and I was laid off in the oil field and moved to Colorado. So that dream kind of went away. And um, after purchasing um, his portion of the land, um, now I like to look at, you know, developing it to some degree. And what that development would look like would be perhaps a, a simple barn if that would be approved and then putting a, a wedding venue type facility up there. Um, as you can see, it's, it's towards the base of the mountain and this is the current road. The City of Casper, for whatever reason, the eighties did surface that with an asphalt road and uh, curb and gutter. And then also brought utilities up that road. It's been dilapidated severely, as you can see, there's uh, you know, three, four-foot weeds and, and sunflowers that grow in the summer. And the city is on, on the hook to um, get that up to code. And part of the reason of the deannexation is honestly, I don't see a good use of tax dollars to have the City of Casper improve that road. It's a road that goes to nowhere, there's no development out there. And the property that's next to it is the Wolf Creek Ranch, that's tied to a trust and I don't imagine them um, you know, subdividing that ranch or, or changing in that, in, in any manner, so. Roads are made to be driven on and the city inventory of streets need better improvement than, than what should be ta- taking place here. As you can see, the subdivision is uh, six lots and the idea would be if a deannexation would take place, we would vacate that lot and turn it into one lot, because it's not going to be a, a subdivision or development in any regard. And then also a vacate of Moose Road, again, uh, the reason behind it is there shouldn't be any city funds to, to go into improving that road. And honestly, I would hate to see streetlights out there too, if you've been out on the property, it's, it's like you're in the country. Plan development, as I had just spoken about, we would ex out all of those lots, vacate that. And then um, you know, if it would please the county commission and county staff, we would um, put just a dirt surface lot and cul-de-sac at the end of that private driveway at that point. And then here's what the zoning currently looks like, so you have Wolf Creek Ranch, that's your urban agriculture. And in the uh, Gorgon subdivision, that's also urban ag, but it's uh, city limits, ur- urban ag. So if a deannexation would take place, we would match the surrounding zoning of that. And you can see of the property, only four hundred feet actually touched um, city limits. Everything else is state land and county land. And then here's the view from the end of the property and that's where we propose the uh, the wedding venue, um, B. Currently, there are people that are interested um, in booking weddings there, they want something that's a, a country setting. Something that matches the lifestyle that, that we enjoy here in Wyoming and something that also showcases uh, you know, the mountains. And you can see the entire City of Casper and the North Flat River as well. And then going into it, here's um, more Moose Street that goes up the property. Again, I think it's fine the way it looks right there. There's the end of the surface paved area and the beginning of um, just, I guess, a, a dirt two-track. And then beyond that, that's Wolf Creek Ranch right there. And then beyond that is where the, the state land continues at the base of the mountain. That's, I believe, over three thousand acres there, so there's no future development. Um, the City of Casper is pretty much at its limits right there at, at Wolf Creek. The state land is a drainage area that goes through Wolf Creek subdivision. So a deannexation wouldn't hurt any future development. There is also a huge um, landslide on that hill years back. That's it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to.
Jesse, my, my understanding is the city is already okayed this, they're already a hundred percent in favor of, of this deannexation as far as that goes.
That's correct.
And so basically, my understanding is that at this point in time, we just need to, to approve that portion of it, is that, is that correct or?
Mr. Chairman, um, the, the statute that applies to municipal deannexation, um, it requires the landowner to file a petition with the clerk of the city. Um, and then provide a copy to the county. Um, and then the county commissioners within sixty days of receiving that petition will prepare a report on the impact of the deannexation. So I think once um, a petition's been filed, we'll get that to our planning department and our consultant and they'll prepare a report for um, the commissioners and for the city.
Now, will this have to go through planning and zoning as well or just through the commissioners?
It, it just has to go through the commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so once we have that taken care of, then we can, we can move forward.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, just looking forward, um, I guess, direction, if you're interested in pursuing that uh, deannexation uh, path. Then of course we would then follow um, state statute, do the publication in the newspaper and so on and so forth. The uh, original request of a deannexation that happened uh, years ago, the uh, city was not on board because it was going to be a development. And they wanted the revenue from building permits and um, property taxes. Now that uh, everything has changed since then, bringing up a deannexation, again, they are in favor of, of that. Because that revenue is no longer there, it's going to be an empty lot, there's not going to be anybody living up there. And again, just a. a, an old pole barn is kind of all we have in mind.
We got any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks for your presentation, it's very well done. I, I don't recall the minimum lot size in this.
Ten, ten.
So you can't quite do, well, yeah, you, you could do multiple lots if you wanted to, but you're not planning on doing that, as I understand it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, that's, that's correct and the, the city also requested if I were to subdivide it, they would want to then forcefully annex this property back into, you know, their inventory at that point.
Do you have water and sewer running to the end of the Moose Road?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there is fourteen hundred linear feet of city water, city sewer. If things proceed from here, there would be an MOU agreement between the City of Casper and Gorgon LLC to then stop all services at the end of, or the beginning of Moose and just cap it basically right there.
Oh, you wouldn't do an outside city water sewer agreement, you wouldn't maintain those services?
From the direction that they wanted to go, they didn't want to offer that as an option and if I were to get city water, they would like to, again, bring this back into the, into the city, but there, you know, there is a small clause in the municipal code that does allow for outside city water, city services for property that's within, I think, three hundred and fifty feet, so that kind of contradicts each other, but again, we're not there yet in the MOU agreement and that could be something negotiated, but honestly, if we were going to have that, it would be just to support the venue and landscaping.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I think we should grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
I'm in favor of this, but we need to go through the, the process with the permitting and all, or the whatever word it is. Anyways, so I don't have a problem with it and encourage you to just go through planning and zoning, get it going, but it's just one of five.
Okay. Maybe I should ask if anybody has any objection to this? That might be easier. I'd recommend that you go ahead and get with our county attorney, but get your paperwork filed and get it back to us, I don't think anybody here has any problem with the annexation of this. At least I haven't heard anything, so I think that's thumbs up as far as moving forward with that and follow the statute. Got it taken care of.
Yes, sir, and thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, thank you commissioners. Good to see you, sir.
We've got almost an hour before our next groups is coming in, so we have almost an hour before our next appointment. Commissioner Coates?
If it please the commission, I'd like to discuss appointments to the Statutory Parks Board and the direction we want to go on that as a commission.
I think this would be a good time, we have time.
Well, if I may then, I would like to start accepting applications as a commission, probably throughout the month of March to potentially one to two members in April or May timeframe.
See, anybody got any objections to starting to take applications, we're not filling them, we're not interviewing, we're just taking applications at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
Just to make it official, permitting the, the agenda to, for this discussion, right, so that it can be is that what you want to do? Casey is.
Yes, I guess we should, I'm in the agenda to reconsideration of applications for Parks, Statutory Parks Board.
Second.
All right. I mean, we don't really have to make a motion or do anything, all we have to do is talk about it and discuss it, so.
I'd be in favor of that, though. I think we should be taking assistance, applications and trying to get those off the board as soon as possible once everything's settled, so, yeah, I'd be totally in favor getting assistance in.
Yeah, because like I said, this is just discussion on that, but I, I don't see any problem with moving forward with having those applications out there and starting to accept them so that we can build a list for interviews down the road. Michelle, do we need to change our application at all? Okay, all right, all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michelle, do we have a standard practice that we should follow for a period of time to accept applications, is it thirty days typically or does it, do we just do whatever we want?
There, we have board appointments in June that take effect or end on June thirtieth, start on July first and then start on one-one and on twelve-thirty-one, so I generally start in April or May, get the word out to all the boards and then October, so and that's, and we'll just never know what kind of results we're gonna get and then there's a little spiel, sometimes it goes in the newspaper, our best results have been through Oil City when I email all the press, do a, you know, media release, so it just depends on what route you guys want to take, generally, Oil City has been the biggest response, people, because I always ask when, where they got, you know, where they learned about it and then of course we get it online, so I think if we were to do something online, we would need to be, we would need a little bit of a specific of what that board would do and I think this one would be new. And that's on you guys, that's gonna be, that's gonna depend on, you know, how, how, what you're gonna require for the application, like, right now, there's a letter of interest and there's a resume that folks present, whatever you guys are gonna want presented with that, I know airport and library, you know, it's a resume, a lot of them present the, the resume, the letter of interest and then it's just directly, you know, if they have any questions on how, how everything goes, it's always a Lisa or Greta question.
Okay, thank you, it, it seems to me, first of all, I, I support Commissioner Coates' desire to have these one or two positions filled as soon as possible, I'd like to see that happen. I, I think we, I think these are important positions and I would hope that we can find the right balance of the appropriate amount of time to get the word out, I would support definitely getting it out on Oil City and, you know, of course, our website and, yeah, I personally know probably six people that might be interested, I, I don't know if they would actually be interested at this point, but, so, so I anticipate having a, a good, healthy number of applications, so I'm, I'm wondering, it may be in order for us to get our job description right, that might, I hate to say it, take till the next meeting and then have at least forty-five days, although I think this conversation today might start get, to help get the word out, but it, it might not be, we might not be able to start interviewing till May first, I, I don't know, but I, I would sure like to get some of these filled.
My recommendation would be to do something similar to what we do for some of our other outside boards, airport board, the fair board, library board, where we actually have a resume, something that states their interest in their, in their concerns and what they want to do, so we have a background and then we can develop those questions and everything else around that as well as the application, I think that, that way we're staying consistent with what we're already doing, we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel and then we can work on just exactly what we, what we're looking for in the next timeframe, but I do think that tho, those are pretty straightforward, those are pretty simple as far as requests for the application goes, so I don't see that as being anything out of the ordinary or anything that's, that we're not already doing some of our other boards and so I think that would be a, a very simplistic approach to, to getting interest and seeing what we actually have out there. What? Any other comments on that? Heather, does that make sense?
Chairman, would you, would you like our office to work on some type of description as to kind of the, the type of candidate you're looking for maybe, and what the expectations of, of the, the board member would be and if, if there's any particular skills or anything they'd like to look for?
I'm not sure we know what we're, we're looking for, part of the thing is with this particular type of board, a lot of that's gonna depend on what their resume says and what their background is and looking through that and finding out that, that good mix because with our parks system, it's, it's very diverse, it's all over the place, we have everything from hills half acre to little lakes to the, to the mountain and every one of them are a little bit different, so trying to come up with a a specific portion of it, I think that they need to express what their, what their, their background is and what their interest is and I think that's gonna be the main determining factor of, of who we put on that board. I'm, I'm open to any other discussion, but I think that's, you know, that's, that's one of the things we've looked at with our other boards is try to find out what that, that good mix is, so we have the right, right people for the, for the positions, so that, that's what I would put out there.
Chairman, commissioners, what have a deadline of when you want them submitted and then also who, who will they be calling and talking to if they want, if they have questions about the board? But like, for instance, like Glenn is the contact for airport, Lisa or Greta would be the contact for the library, when people call and ask questions, I can always direct them to those individuals, who is going to be the one that I direct the questions to for anybody interested in the new Parks Board?
Do it. Yeah, a combination of Michael, as far as what some of the background is and some of the history, but at the same time that probably need to have, because I am the chairman of that board, have them reach out to me as well, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna divert them to Michael as far as the background stuff goes, but if they have any other specific questions that are not necessarily parks-related, but some of the other intricacies of the board, I can answer those as well, so. Right now, I don't know if we have a deadline because all we're gonna do is start, start the application process, yeah, just leave it open for right now, for one thing, if we're only opening, I mean, this is gonna be a staggered thing, so we may, it may be a while before we close it, before we have it full built up, so I wouldn't have a closing date. Anything else?
Does that answer everything?
All right. I'm gonna skip down and go ahead and have Heather do her updates now, since we're well ahead of schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I really don't have anything, if, if there's any questions on the consent agenda, I think there's very little on there for this evening's meeting, just an, an agreement from Mr. Hagler and a sheriff's office agreement, so if there's any questions on those, I'll, I'll do my best to try to answer them.
Okay. Nothing else?
Not unless there's any specific questions you may have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, I'll give you guys the option, we can either take a short recess until four-twenty or if you guys have any updates as far as legislative updates, I know Commissioner Nicolason was down for the signing of the of, what was it, one forty-seven for the investment yesterday? Now we have it scheduled for, I guess we could, we could, we could move into the executive session to see, we still have time, so. So do we have a motion to move into executive session for sixteen-four dash four-five? You need to, you need to.
I move it, I don't have much of a voice today. I move to go into exec due to the time issues.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, well, we'll be in exec. Okay, all right, well, we'll be in exec.
All right, we are re-adjourned. And the next on the agenda is the update for the Collective Health Trust and turn that over to Commissioner Nicholasson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The purpose for this discussion is to touch base with some of our respected community members that are serving the county and our community on the different, on different boards, including the Neutrona County Collective Health Trust and the Memorial Board, Hospital Board of Trustees. We, we look perhaps to having some discussion today and maybe trying to get some direction either from this commission to the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, but to just touch base on an issue that continues to be at least front and center in my mind, which is trying to improve healthcare in Neutrona County. We've had lots of conversations over the years I've been on the commission. We've seen some progress in some areas and some maybe lack of progress in other areas. If, if she's ready, I would just invite Mr. Jen, Ms. Jennifer True to come up and visit with us as the commission. And I think most of the people in the room are aware. She is one of our appointees to the Neutrona County Collective Health Trust. Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, you gotta, no, you gotta push, turn the button on. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman North, commissioners, thank you for your time today. My name is Jen True, and I have prepared a statement for today. Would be acceptable if we could hold the comments to the end. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So I come before you guys with great respect for the work you do on behalf of the people of Neutrona County. I've been honored to serve as your appointee on the board of the Neutrona Collective Health Trust. But after much reflection, I have made the difficult decision to resign from this position effective immediately. As you all know, following the sale of Wyoming Medical Center to Banner Health in 2020, the Neutrona Collective Health Trust, formerly the Wyoming Medical Center Foundation, entered into an agreement with Neutrona County. The stated purpose of this agreement was to, and I quote, "Support the delivery and accessibility of high-quality, efficient healthcare services throughout Neutrona County and the overall physical and mental health and well-being of residents of Neutrona County." However, based on my observations, both as a citizen and a board member, the trust is felt to meet these objectives. When I accepted this role, I did so with the hope for the transformative change the trust could bring to Neutrona County. Instead, it has become clear that the organization is strayed from its founding mission. Rather than prioritizing community impact, collaboration, and responsible stewardship, the trust has developed a culture of spending marked by extravagant expenditures, self-promotion, and a troubling lack of fiscal accountability. Since my appointment in March 2024, I have witnessed decisions that prioritize institutional self-interest over community well-being. The trust allocated over $6 million in trust funds to purchase and renovate a building that was already functional, while simultaneously increasing staff salaries by over 14% and reducing community giving by 4%. Increasing salaries and decreasing giving is a historical pattern of the trust and reflects a disturbing shift away from its core responsibility of serving Neutrona County residents. Beyond the excessive internal spending, the trust is diverting funds outside of Neutrona County to statewide initiatives under the justification that this policy work will eventually benefit our community. However, the original transaction, transaction agreement explicitly states that the trust funds, and again, I'll quote, "For the sole and exclusive purpose of providing, supporting, or enhancing the delivery of healthcare services in the primary service area." Despite this clear directive, the trust continues to justify these expenditures, when in reality, the optics suggest that of self-promotion, not local impact, is the primary motivation. While the trust has justified capital expenditures for its own benefit, it has refused to provide funding for the other local nonprofits' capital campaigns, applying a double standard to its own spending versus community needs. Moreover, granting decisions are not being made primarily, based primarily on the quality of services provided, but rather on a self-defined policy that prioritizes political ideologies. This was most clearly exemplified by the trust's refusal to fund the Wyoming Rescue Mission due to its faith-based staffing policies. Instead of assessing organizations on their ability to effectively serve the community, the trust has used its position of power to impose ideological conformity. I believe the trust has used funding as a tool to intimidate and mandate compliance from other nonprofits, forcing them to align with its own ideological agenda rather than focusing on the best interests of the people of Neutrona County. This is a blatant overreach of authority and abuse of philanthropic influence. From inflated salaries and costly consultants to excessive spending on conference travel, elaborate meeting spreads, and non-essential perks, the trust has failed to uphold its fiduciary responsibility. I'm a private philanthropist and a former public accountant. I find it deeply troubling that private foundations funded with private dollars are held to a higher standard of efficiency and effectiveness than this public trust, which manages community funds. The governance of the trust is deeply compromised. The board is largely developed by the executive director, Beth Worthing, and as a result, many members appear unwilling to question her actions. Additionally, their practice of compensating the chairman of the board poses a potential conflict of interest, undermining the independence necessary for proper oversight. A particularly alarming example of this lack of oversight occurred when the recent salary increases. While based on a consultant's recommendation were presented by the executive director and staff directly in front of the board, at no point was an independent executive session held to discuss these raises, which is a standard practice in both corporate and nonprofit governance. In all of my years of serving on boards, I have never seen an organization bypass such fundamental governance principles. This trust has morphed into a self-declared autonomous entity, disregarding the origin of its funding and its duty to the citizens of Neutrona County. Instead of acting as responsible stewards of this public resource, the trust has operated in a vacuum, free from meaningful oversight or accountability. Compounding these concerns, the trust recently declined to report to you all, the county commissioners, the very body to which it should remain accountable. Furthermore, and perhaps the most important, since its inception, the trust abdicated its responsibility to ensure quality health outcomes for Wyoming Medical Center and its patients. Only after being challenged in 2024 by the county commissioners did the trust reluctantly acknowledge its responsibility. Rather than taking meaningful action, however, its solution was simply to hire yet another consultant. This pattern of outsourcing key responsibilities is particularly alarming, given that the trust has built an extensive internal staff. For an organization with such a large team, its heavy reliance on outside consultants raises serious concerns about efficiency, necessity, and accountability. The residents of Neutrona County should question the means, methods, oversight, and accountability of the Neutrona Collective Health Trust. I have lost faith in the trust leadership, in board oversight, and in the ability of anyone within this current structure to challenge the organization's direction. For these reasons, I can no longer in good conscience serve on their board. I urge you, the Neutrona County Commissioners, and this community to demand an independent audit of the trust's spending practices, consultant contracts, staffing levels, and overall efficiency. It is critical that this trust be held accountable and that it fulfills its duty to serve all citizens of Neutrona County, not just itself. Commissioners, I sincerely appreciate your time and your service to Neutrona County. My decision to resign was not made lightly, but I believe it is important to bring these concerns to light, to push for transparency, and to ensure that the intent of the original agreement between the county and the trust is honored. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have comments.
Jen, will you get a copy of that to Michelle so we can all have a copy of it?
I have copies. Almost everything I read is copied from my letter of resignation, and I have copies for everyone.
Okay. I appreciate that. That way we all have a
Absolutely.
copy of it.
Absolutely.
You got any questions for Jen?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Dallas. Obviously, it's not been a super easy road, so I appreciate that.
Well, you're a very knowledgeable person.
Well, thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
I do have, I don't understand, and maybe you can answer this, having been on that board. And I don't want to pick on Eric. I really don't. I'm not going to pick on anybody tonight. We don't have any board appointments that we've ever made that makes $20,000 a year.
Sure.
And I think that, I was told that's what he makes per year.
I don't know if he takes the money. I know that it's available for the board chair.
I don't, I don't know that either.
I can't speak for him.
But I, as a commissioner, I, that's the one thing I really didn't want to see in these board appointments, where people got paid to go do them. Because I just think it changes the whole landscape of everything. But do you have any statements you'd like to make about how to improve this board, in your mind?
Honestly, I am concerned that working from within is not the current solution. I mean, yes, your board appointees, I think are, they need to be strong. They need to have a voice. I think they could serve as more of a reporting mechanism between the trust and, and the county commissioners. I don't totally know what that looks like, Dallas. I really don't, but, or Mr. Commissioner, sorry. But definitely something has to be changed, and there certainly needs to be more accountability on certainly their fiscal accountability and their spending. So.
Okay. Commissioner Nicholasson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Jen, thank you so much. We appreciate your, your hard work and dedication. I know when we appointed you, we were really excited because of your very deep and diverse background as a CPA, so from the financial side, but also from all of the board work that you've done. Frankly, I'm really sad that it, it didn't work out better because I know it wasn't a lack of the quality of appointee.
Thank you.
I, I don't know what the answer is yet. I, I do feel that two appointees by the county is not gonna be a majority on a, what, nine-member foundation board. There are no shareholders. There are no, they're not dependent upon raising funds, so they don't need to be, behave themselves. I expressed great reservation about buying any property long before they bought this property. I thought there was plenty of office leased space, including some of the best in town, which they were currently, or they were, they, they were in. I, I just, I just think that they, they lost sight of their, their mission. And you know, that's my, my perspective on that. So thank you again. We appreciate your, your time and service on the board.
And thank you very much. I did appreciate the honor. Yes.
Commissioner Coats.
Sorry.
So thanks for putting everything forward and listening to your resignation letter, as, as it may be. You mentioned something that I just had a question about. You mentioned ideological agenda. What's your assessment of their, their ideology that they're, they're utilizing? Because words mean something to me, and I'm kind of curious.
Sure. It's the DIE policy that they sort of have required the most of the charities that receive grant funding, follow and have a statement, even though there has been some pushback from some of the charities, that that's not what they're supposed to be doing. But it is certainly a requirement in a lot of the funding. Yep.
Commissioner Mellon.
I'm not letting you go.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, I'd also like to thank you for, I really don't want to accept the um, thank you for your time. She's already stolen my, her though, as far as question. In their policies, does it direct them to have that as a consideration for, for funding?
If you take a look at any of the funding information on their website, even their mission, how they talk about it, inclusion is their number one, one of their number one pushes. Although transparency is also one, and I will tell you, they are not transparent.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Jen, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We have so many boards that we have volunteers on that without those, we couldn't get the job done that we need to get done. And I do appreciate that. Reading through a little cheat sheet that we were provided by our county attorney, what is your opinion as far as what commissions actually has, what authority the commission actually has at this point in time over the board?
Um, over the board, I mean, you have two county appointees. I don't know that there's a whole lot else that, within the teeth of the transaction agreement, that will get you over that. But I do think the push for transparency, it's pretty hard for them to hide, I would think, from this group and from the public about what, what is really happening.
Don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to
Yeah, no, no, no.
put everything right out there. So, because I know there's things that, reading through it, that one of the things that is supposed to be done is they are supposed to let us know where they're giving money to and, and what charities and what group thing else. And that's something that we definitely need to work on. I think that's, that's true all the way across the board and with all of our boards. So I think that's something that we need to really work on as far as it completes transparency. But with this one, because it is, was established with public money, and even though we can't, we don't have a whole lot of authority over the board, per se. There are some things that we do have authority over, and that's something that we need to work on and find out what those areas are and exercise that.
And I would challenge your county appointee to come and make regular reporting to you all about what is actually happening over there. I mean, there's a clear, there's not as much, I report to you all. I don't necessarily report to that board. I mean, I'm a member of the board, but I report to you all. And so I think having future appointees coming and telling you what's happening, I think that would be pretty powerful for the pushing that, that transparency.
I appreciate that. Does anybody else got any questions for Ms. True?
Thank you. Hopefully I didn't take up too much time, but I appreciate it, and it was my honor.
You bet. Thank you. Commissioner Nicholasson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We have members of the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees here, and we also have Mr. Tom Swanson and, and some of the group of Neutrona County leaders that have been engaged on this issue before and have communicated with us in writing before. We, Mr. Swanson, where his office dropped off some a packet earlier today, there was a little bit of a
Let me interrupt you for just a second. Mr. Swanson, would you mind coming up? Since you provided this, that way if we have any questions or anything else, we can, we can ask.
So I, because we I think our, I think our commissioner's office door was closed when this was dropped off, and so it didn't get on our plate until just this second. But we did receive it. I think we'll be kind of trying to digest it while you're here today, but you know, we appreciate, we appreciate your group and the fact that you all have spent a lot of hours trying to work with Banner. hours trying to work with Banner and, and I think the collective to some degree. I think that your group is deeply concerned about the quality of healthcare in Neutrona County, and, and so you've provided us this citizens' group statement. Knowing that we haven't had a chance to review the packet yet, Tom, would you want to provide us some highlights or maybe an overview of what we're seeing here and, and what you see as some of the, the biggest issues in front of the county in terms of healthcare?
Yes, Commissioner North and other commissioners, I provided you a number of documents. One is a graph that is a seven-year look at the Medicaid, Medicare star rating system that was highlighted in the Casper Star Tribune article 10 days ago. It only included one data point, which was 2025, and we wanted to look at the data points when Wyoming Medical Center was not owned by Banner and then post Banner's performance. And as you can see quickly, since Banner's purchase, the, there's two ratings in that, as if you remember the article, there's a patient satisfaction recommendation rating, and there is an overall hospital rating. The hospital rating has gone up and down since Banner's purchase. It did climb to four for a one-year period and is now in the three and two range since that. The patient satisfaction survey remains at two since Banner's purchase. This is a survey that's conducted on all hospitals, and it's standardized, it, the metadata in, within this survey took us 16 hours to download and examine. So the graph is a quick look at a lot of examination, but those are the star ratings that they publish. If, if Commissioner North, if you would, Chairman North, if you would permit it, we have a statement that the citizen group has prepared that Dr. Anderson would like to give. I can review the other things that are in there. I did give you three of the contracts, the closing contracts that were executed by the county, the Wyoming Foundation, which is now the collective. And I have highlighted in red and yellow on those documents, the county's responsibility and the collective's responsibility in this deal that was made. As Dallas points out, excuse me, as Commissioner Laird points out, many times it is, it's not an attorney's opinion, it is, but I can read, all of us can read on the, on the committee, and we know that the five of you can read. And I think if you read the yellow and red in conjunction with the rest of the contracts, it's clear that the county has some responsibility. And the only entity that has that responsibility to look at the collective, you formed the collective and it is your job to review the collective. So if Commissioner North, if it's okay, we'd like to have-
That's fine, yeah, go ahead and come on up and, I'll have to turn on that other mic.
Commissioners, I'm Dr. James Anderson, I think I've met most of you.
You'll have to speak up a little bit louder, otherwise-
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
I'm Dr. James Anderson, I've been here since 1981 and practiced medicine, was here when the hospital went from the Memorial Hospital to Wyoming Medical Center. And I represent the citizens' group in this statement, not the board of trustees. Wyoming Medical Center, before it was acquired by Banner, was a major provider of healthcare in Casper and Wyoming. After the transfer of leadership to Banner, there has been a major decline in the number of specialties, critical care, patient satisfaction, provider satisfaction, and the public perception of healthcare in Casper. This decline is why our citizens' group was formed to address these concerns in November of 2023. After presenting our concerns to Banner and the collective, there has been slow improvement. The local Banner administration finally seems to understand what is needed to provide quality healthcare in Casper and central Wyoming. However, attempts to implement these changes have been impeded by corporate manner. Providing care in our rural environment is not the same as urban care. Transfers to hospitals out of state decreases convenience and access to care for patients. It also increases risk and cost to Wyoming patients. The county and Wyoming Medical Center Foundation formed the collective three and a half years ago with the primary job of monitoring Banner's performance and adherence to the closing contracts. The collective has chosen not to do so until recently. Our growing group of, our growing citizens' group has attempted to provide the collective with data and evidence of patient experiences without any transparent response for one and a half years. We applaud the hiring of the outside monitor, PYA, and this holds promise for the future. The future of Wyoming Medical Center and healthcare in Wyoming requires all of us to address the issues and develop Wyoming solutions instead of Banner's corporate urban approach. Following review of the three highlighted contracts from Doc, we hope that you will agree that it has been the commission, commission's main contractual job as it relates to Banner, to work with the collective to enforce the intent in terms of the closing contracts. It is time for the county to do that. Thank you.
Would you make sure that we have a copy of that also?
Do you have a copy?
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure we had that, so, if we got any questions. Mr. Mellon?
Thank you for coming. Just, I know your letter says it, is there any hesitancy or any, any problems that you see moving forward with them using PYA?
We reviewed the PYA approach, and it looks very promising to be able to get the information we need to make decisions, okay?
Okay. So you, like I said, you're, you're in favor of it, and, and that hopefully will help us move forward with this?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For either of you gentlemen, and I appreciate you being here. Dr. Anderson, I also, you're also on the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, and we appreciate your service in that, and so I think that you'll continue to be an asset for the county in, in that, in helping us out in that regard. For either of you, are there specific items of information or categories of information from either the collective or Banner that you think we should be asking for to get to the nub or the heart of whether quality care is being provided? I mean, I, I know that your letter to us and your statement is that some things have not been transparent and provided in the last year and a half. Are there things that you'd like to, you know, put a bug in our ear today to, to have our, our council look into and, and request? I know we're working on, and today we have actually reviewed a letter that's to both, to both Banner and the collective that asks for all kinds of information, and I know that'll be going out soon, but anything, I guess now is a great time if there are things to add to the list.
In trying to work through the issues with the hospital, I've discussed what's going on with the hospital with a number of different physicians, and there's hope. And I think they, they have the perception that the local administrators are starting to work with them in, you know, in very positive ways, but they have some impedence by corporate manner in getting things done. It's not the same as it was when there was everybody in the same town.
Are you aware of any specialties or sub-specialty areas that are, were being provided at the time of the conveyance in 2000 that are not being provided at this point?
I think rheumatology left, okay, and I think one of the biggest problems is recruiting to Casper is not the same as recruiting to Phoenix, okay? And there's, you know, sometimes it requires more of a stipend to get people here, but there are ways to recover that with allowing them to use extenders and outreach and stuff like this. We did that for years, and those things seem to be on the agenda as best I can tell currently. I think there's hope, but we have to work together, and I think we need to find some of the local ways that used to work very well that haven't been supported by Banner as good as they should be.
All right, any other questions?
I think one other thing would be primary care. I think it's, you know, I know they're making efforts, but it's still difficult to get a doctor in Casper. I get calls all the time for people to try to get them into somebody to see.
Contractually, Banner is required to offer the citizens of, of Neutrona County the same care that they received prior to Banner's purchase for a period of 10 years. Then Banner is on their own. They're required to supply the 14 criteria that's mentioned in the contract. They have not done that from time to time over the three and a half years. They have attempted, and they have sat in front of this commission and, and described what they've accomplished, and, and to Banner's credit, they have gotten better than they were a year and a half ago when we started, but there's still specialties that are not being fulfilled, which causes our citizens' cost and, and, and they're away from their families when they leave the state, and so contractually, they're required to do that. No one has enforced the contract. The, the collective certainly hasn't done their job, and the county is equally responsible for enforcement, and to date, that hasn't been done. So in fairness, I think the thing to do is look at the contracts and see if the county can become engaged in enforcement of those contracts, and that will make Banner, it will have to make Banner better, and that's what we've been trying to do for a year and a half, is make Banner better. We all know the, the stories that have appeared, and we all have, you have been provided by our group and others, the horror stories that we've had at Banner. Not to say that the medical center didn't have some of those same horror stories, but we've had quite a few. We've had too many for the citizens in Neutrona County. That's why this group is put together.
All right. Thank you for your time. We do have Mr. Porter back there. I would appreciate it if you'd come up and just give us a little bit of background on what Banner's done. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
Chairman, county commissioners, thank you for giving me a moment here. It's, it's always a good opportunity to come and talk about the hospital, talk about something that's important to us, and that's healthcare within Neutrona County. And I, I think that the conversation here highlights the importance of the engagement of PYA into this discussion, because as has been said, we've been discussing this now for a couple of years. There's a lot of, of opinion on are we in compliance with post-closing agreements or are we not? And really what's lacking is the subject matter expertise, and so I really support what's being done by the trust at the encouragement of this group to find an outside auditor, a, a subject matter expert. PYA is a nationally recognized organization that lives in breeze, hospital administration, healthcare systems, and we, we just submitted to them our 2024 annual report. They're scrubbing that. I have promised to make available to them the information that they need to make their assessment, and I think the best thing we can do is to let them do their job, and then when we meet again in, in July for the accountability meeting, we'll have their expert testimony. And then, and then it's, we have a, we have an expert weighing in on it, and if there's things we need to improve on, then I am committed to doing that, but I think that's what we need, is we need that outside subject matter expert, and so I, I support the, the work that's being done in that.
I've heard a lot of good things about what PYA is finding and what they're going through and looking at, and I look forward to their, their report to see just exactly what it says, and I just want to make sure that Banner is committed to following what those recommendations are.
Absolutely, no, I, I support that.
As well as the trust, it's not just one-sided, it's both sides, we, so we can get everything covered and make sure that that's taken care of, so. That's obviously not our expertise, and it's always good to have a, a third set of eyes to look at things, to go through it with a fine-tooth comb and find out where those issues are and find out where we are in compliance and where we aren't in compliance, and both of them are just as important. You have to look at where we're actually meeting the goals as well as where we're falling short, because if you don't, then you don't get that, that rounded expectation. If people only hear the negative side of things, then, and not the positive on what you are accomplishing, then that's, that's just as bad. So I do believe that that's something that, that we have to do. We learn from constructive criticism, not just criticism, but constructive criticism. It has to be that way. It has to be something that we have a goal to work forward to, and if we don't have that, then we're just spinning our wheels, and we, we're doomed to repeat the same problems over and over again. So I do appreciate that. I do appreciate you coming up and, and working with this Alcott Side Consulting Group to try to make things better. I know things are better now, I know you've had some hiccups over there, and I know you've been working on that. There are still a few that I would like to sit down and talk to you about, so we could do that offline, so. Any other questions for Mr. Porter? Right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Member of the council, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions or any other comment? Commissioner Nicholas?
The only other thing I had really on, on my list is that the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees talked in December about trying to schedule a meeting, and, and we'd never landed on a, on a day for that, and I know Commissioner Laird is, is the primary liaison. I would hope that we can work with those board members and, and get a, a meeting set at the earliest possible convenience so that we can involve them. They have a role that can be played that I think can be useful in all of this too, and I think that's set forth in the contractual documents that we're aware of, so I'll work with Commissioner Laird to try to facilitate getting that meeting set up as soon as possible.
Any other comments? Eric, come on up. Eric's our other appointee for the, what- Eric, so your appointee for the Protective Health Trust.
Thank you, Chairman North. Commissioners, wasn't really anticipating speaking today because I wasn't exactly sure what was going to be discussed. But I did want to certainly thank Ms. True for her time on the board and her efforts. Also like to thank the citizens group. I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Swanson and the group multiple times. And I think on behalf of the trust, we can look forward to continuing to work with everyone. As you know, I appeared before you last month regarding an extension on the reporting to give PYA some additional time to take a deep dive. However, I, I did want to emphasize that it is our intent to report at the normal time on all the other aspects of what we're required to report to the commission. And having heard a, a lot of, you know, testimony and, and sent some questions on, on the part of, of the commission, we'd really welcome the chance at the end of this month or most likely in April to, to come before you and, and discuss some of those concerns about the non-Banner compliance aspects of, of what the trust is doing. So if, if you're amenable, I'm happy to come back. And just to reiterate, and I, I think I've made this clear, I'm absolutely your appointee. And anytime you have a question, want me to come and, and answer questions and report, I think you all know how to get ahold of me. So please, please do reach out.
All right. Any questions? All right. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we are ahead of schedule, so we are going to take a recess until 5:30. And then we'll, we'll adjourn for a regular meeting.
All right, we will move into public comment at this time.
Rosemary Saban, Natrona County resident. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of this commission. Mr. Millen, how are you tonight? At the last meeting, you demanded that I provide evidence for the $4 million loss of the hospital sale investment. So, as I said, I would provide proof of that. So, if you'll write down the following, September 19th, 2023, work session at 1:29:22 was the discussion. Now you have that in front of you. Mr. Nicholson, I will say good job on professionalism tonight. Thank you. That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll go to Commissioner's comment then. Commissioner Nick Leason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, I spent the day down in Cheyenne working with the Wyoming County Commissioners Association and visiting with legislators and some of the elected officials. The big deal of the day was the governor signing the legislation that allows local governments to invest in equities. There's still some, I think, basically rulemaking that has to be done. And then this county down the road, probably, if I had to guess, six to nine months would make a decision on whether that's something we're interested in. But I know that the folks down there, we're talking about having spent approximately 10 years to get to this point. It's something that the state government has been able to do, the state treasurer, and so it's a big deal for us. There really isn't a whole lot of other news down in the legislature. Listen to a lot of some of the joint committees and what their interim topics might be. But those really aren't worth mentioning today because until management council assigns them, you know, signs off on them, they're not even gonna, you know, we don't even know if this is gonna happen. But anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Millen?
Yeah, the only thing I had was, um, can't find it now. So, I wanted to congratulate the legislature and the governor for signing the Steamboat Scholarship. That opens up a lot of doors for kids, for families to send their kids to schooling outside the public school system. I'm really glad they took this step. It will help alleviate some of the overcrowding, hopefully, with the public school system, allowing a greater breadth of families and students to be able to participate in either public or homeschool. So, I'm really pleased with their actions there.
Commissioner Koch?
So, I spent part of the day in a regional 201 meeting. That's for the regional wastewater treatment plant that services Casper Mills, Barnon, and a host of other water and sewer districts. One of the major things we talked about was the need for infrastructure maintenance. It's fairly extensive for the, I guess, just for just general knowledge on that. There's interceptor sewers that run throughout many of the communities. They tie all into the wastewater treatment plant. That infrastructure is old, you know, and parts of it are failing. As time goes on, though, it will continue to fail mainly due to chemical reactions with H2S gas in the rebar and the concrete. So, just a, just kind of want to put out there just for public knowledge on this. This is a major lift that requires a lot of investment. Numbers were thrown around as the cost of line this thing, which is a much cheaper option than digging it up and replacing it, is up to the tune of around the $40 million mark, and that impacts pretty much everybody. So, just as those discussions continue with improving the infrastructure systems around, it's probably best to keep that in mind as we will all feel that in some way, shape, or form through different governments, different government actions that may come before us. I did talk to the wastewater officer there and expressed support for personally writing a letter to Harriet Hagaman's office, kind of in support of their search for earmark funds to help alleviate some of the problems for the greater county in general. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
It's been an interesting legislative session this year. There's been a lot of stuff that's gone through. We'll wait until everything gets done, said and done, but we'll have a better idea of what bills are going to affect us in different ways here shortly. There's a lot of them that are going to change the way that we have done things in the past. Some good, some I have serious reservations about, but it's neither here nor there. But I do want to thank everybody that has been down there, that has been trying to work together and getting a lot of good for the county and the state done. I've had more contact with our legislators this year than I've ever had before. And they were asking questions, I mean, they were all asking a lot of questions about what these different bills were going to do to the county and how they were going to affect us and how they were going to affect municipalities and other things. And I appreciate them reaching out to us and asking for that input because that's the way government's supposed to work. We're supposed to work together. And even the areas that we don't agree with, you know, if we sit there and we'll concentrate on those areas that we do agree on and work on those, we can get a lot accomplished. And that's what we really have to do. We need to start focusing on the areas that we agree on and not the stuff that we disagree on. So, with that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.